Not yet. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6:30. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Mayor Mac Planning Board for, hey, April 1st, April Fool's Day. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Thank you very much. Let's see, Lynn and Nelson are both alternates, so we'll put them into voting positions tonight, so have a full board of seven. And Andy's last night as the town council rep, so Peter, I guess that makes you an alternate for purposes of tonight. But, welcome and glad to have you and thank you for joining the discussion. Okay, our next meeting after tonight is April 15th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room, which is this room. Let me remind everyone who addresses the board to make sure the microphones are turned on and just speak clearly into them. And there is usually a sign-up sheet. Robert, do we have their sign-up sheet they're supposed to use? A couple of meetings ago, they started doing the sign-up sheets again.
That's for the speakers.
Yeah, for out there, not for us. Oh, I didn't even realize I've got plans to sign to. Well, fun for us. Okay. That concludes the usual call to order for the meeting. And with that, our next item is our consent agenda, which has two items, regional impact determinations and a maintenance bond to be released for Greenfield Farms subdivision. What say you, board members? Will it be a motion to approve the consent agenda or to take the items off of it? Motion to approve it? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero to approve the consent agenda. Karen, did you have a question or are you okay?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay. We are going to reverse item three and four on our agenda because of the order in which they were received by the department. They somehow ended up on the agenda backwards. And so, we will go with number four, Patrick Baldwin as the applicant and LL Realty LLC as the owner. Review for acceptance and conditional approval of amended site plan to construct a 15,452 square foot warehouse building addition on the northwest face of the existing building along with associated site improvements. The parcels located at 4 Web Drive in the I-1 Industrial and Aqua Conservation Districts, Tax Map 2D Lot 32. Case Planning Board 2025-8, and it's continued from our March 18th, 2025 meeting. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, just by means of a quick recap. At the last meeting, the applicant had been discussing with the board a number of waiver requests, one of which was to Section 3.07.B.11, requiring a stormwater quality treatment practice or facility designed to meet NHDES AOT standards. And the board at that time decided to continue the waiver discussion to allow time for staff to talk with Fussin O'Neal to get their opinion on the waiver. Since that time, Fussin O'Neal has recommended a compromise where the applicant provide pre-treatment for the existing parking lot, which was proposed to drain into the, into the proposed, I'm sorry, which does drain into the proposed detention system, or will drain, rather, but not necessarily provide pre-treatment for the new runoff coming from the proposed roof, given that it's a cleaner type of runoff. The applicant, to my understanding, did agree to that, and they can speak to that tonight. So with that compromise being reached, Fussin O'Neal would support that waiver being granted.
Thank you, Robert. All right. Thank you for visiting us again. Introduce yourselves again for the record and give us our update from your view.
Thanks for meeting with us again. I'm Alex Giuffredo from Hayner Swanson. With me is Tom Zajak from Hayner Swanson as well. And as Robert stated, we were in contact with Fussin O'Neal and staff regarding the sixth waiver, which is stormwater quality. And Fussin O'Neal suggested that we do some pre-treatment for the upper parking, or southern parking lot, if you're looking at the plan, as kind of a compromise for our site constraints that we have. And we've come to the conclusion that we can retrofit some sort of solution there to provide a pre-treatment for that parking lot.
So what is the solution that you're proposing for the pre-treatment?
We have a couple of options right now. We're looking at just, Tom, if you want to...
For the record, my name is Tom Zajak, civil engineer with Hayner Swanson. And Mr. Chair, we looked at a couple of different options based on what's available to us. That existing system does not have any treatment to it now and kind of conveys in a headwall towards our project area, so we could retrofit the end of the pipe with a sediment forbay or kind of a riprap depression. That's one option. We can also look at more of a mechanical treatment system, more of a proprietary system, which would essentially be a catch basin type structure with all kinds of bells and whistles in there that separate sediment and debris and floatables. So, there's a couple of different options on the board, and I think as the condition outlines, we're more than happy to have Fussin O'Neal review what we come up with and ultimately sign off on that.
So, Robert, is that the intention is that we would grant a waiver subject to the condition that they propose their idea to Fussin O'Neal for sign-off?
Yep.
Is Fussin O'Neal comfortable making a decision and sign-off? I know sometimes entities and agencies don't love the idea of us dumping our decision-making on them.
In this case, we've had the communication with them. They are okay with that.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for the communication with them and the compromise. Board members, I'll open up for you guys to have questions. I think we kind of talked out every other aspect of this applicant, application last time, and certainly will, ready to redo any of that discussion if you want to, but I think the real focus is on this waiver of stormwater treatment facility. Nelson, you had a question or comment for the applicant?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. First of all, one of the things I noticed last time, and I thought we had talked about, was that we, the planning board, should be made aware of this agreement that's been made between DOT and, and the applicants regarding the, what they call the St. Gobain Agreement, as to where it applies in town and what it implies in the town. And I, we didn't have any of that material submitted to us yet, and so I'd be very interested to see what, what that's all about.
I am also interested in that as a general matter, not necessarily holding one person's application hostage over it, but I think from the planning board standpoint, I definitely have interest in knowing what that is and what are the elements that relate to it. Robert, were you kind of tuned into that discussion that we had last time? I know you weren't here, but I think you kind of get reports on what we do.
Yeah, I was. I'll try to obtain that language from DES.
Okay. Is it, what exactly was it described? Tom, I think you were the one that had described it to us or said there was a St. Gobain something or other.
Sure. I think it's, it's referenced a number of different ways, but the peer review consultant is actually the one who used that language, the St. Gobain Consent Decree area as part of St. Gobain's consent decree and deal with DES, not, not DOT. It's this wide swath of town and other municipalities in which there is, I'll describe heightened scrutiny towards infiltration based on the use of that site and where, you know, the forever chemicals are. I know we have other sites in town that have been successful in using infiltration, but there's kind of heightened restrictions. And so, part of our waiver request reference that here, but more so than that, the fact that this is an industrial site, the site constraints we have here, the soil conditions here, really do not, do not promote infiltration, so. But in terms of that general agreement, it is something the peer review consultant is aware of, that DES is aware of, and so projects that are within that area do have heightened requirements related to infiltration if they choose that method of stormwater management.
Well, I was curious to see what, where these areas are and, and what the constraints are. I think I understand, but it'd be good to see what we've been agreed to by DOT and whoever else.
So...
DES.
Yes.
Not DOT.
It's, I certainly don't want to rely on 30 seconds worth of Googling, but there is a 23-page agreement between DES and St. Gobain available online from DES, so we should be able to get it and as a board, have somebody educate us a little bit about it and learn more. Any other comments or questions for the applicant?
There was one other question I had, had to do with the merger of this lot with the adjacent lot. It was in and it was out and it was being talked about, and where is that?
Sure. My understanding, I'll let the applicant answer, but my understanding is they were merging it with the lot to the south of the one with the buildings where the lower parking lot is, and that that's a little triangular piece that's hard to really recognize except for on the NRPC satellite map thing. But, you guys answer that better than I can.
Yeah, I spoke with our client and they do intend to merge those two lots.
Is that part of this application or is this part of this?
Was that one of the conditions of approval, Robert, in your memos, that these lots will be merged?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Anything else?
I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah, I got one. I just want to kind of make sure this is put into the record. Tom, you probably are aware that I'm very familiar with that building, going back to when, actually, when it was bought by Motocross from FW Web. The addition is a pretty good-sized addition, and I just want to make sure that the sprinkler and fire alarm are reviewed by a fire protection engineer to make sure that it's going to be adequate for the purposes and the existing system is going to be able to support it.
I believe our architect has been in contact with the fire department in Penachuk regarding water supply and all those matters.
Have you received any formal comments from fire?
Not yet.
Robert, are you aware of the report or any comments from the fire department on the application?
No, they usually just require a BDA study.
Okay. Anything else that, does that answer your question then?
As best you can. As long as it's reviewed by a fire protection engineer, I'll be comfortable with that.
Understood. Does anyone else have comments or questions about the application?
No.
My recollection is that we did our public hearing last time. Certainly, if any of butters or citizens wished away, and we'll give you another chance. I don't think there is anybody in the room. And with that, the board should take up that last waiver request. Robert, is there a new condition in the memo that deals with the idea of getting Fussin O'Neal's signature? Is that, or is that something we orally want to adopt tonight, or?
Do we orally adopt? I don't see anything. I was looking for it. Which one, no, it's 11. I think it's 11 on page four. The applicant shall provide pre-treatment for runoff from the existing parking lot, the design of which shall be peer reviewed by Fussin O'Neal.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. So, then the board should take up this question of the waiver of Section 3.07B.11 that the applicant's requested, which requires a stormwater quality treatment practice facility designed to meet the requirements of the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services, alteration of terrain standards, and then if anybody is inclined to make such a motion, connect it, please, to one of the two statutory criteria that are in the memo. What say you, board? Does anyone want to make a motion on that waiver?
I'll take it. I move we grant the requested waiver from Section 3.07.B.11, which will still need to be voted on. The applicant received approval of the following waivers to the site plan regulations, 3.11.E., 4.12.A., 4.16., 3.09., 4.14.E., 4.17., and finally, 3.14.
Okay, so those are all voted on already, so we're just doing the 3.07B.11?
Yes.
Which statutory criteria are you looking at for, to support that waiver?
Hardship.
Hardship. So that is the first of the two. Is there a second for Lynn's motion to grant the waiver?
I'll second this.
And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero to grant the waiver. Now, with that waiver dealt with, the next quarter of business for the board is final disposition of the application, which the staff recommends to be conditional final approval subject to the conditions in the memo.
I'm on a roll.
There you go. Lynn's going to do that. Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
I will second that as well.
Motion and a second to grant conditional final approval to, subject to the conditions in the staff's memo. Were there any developed conditions that we added here tonight? I don't think that there were, so. Okay. With that in mind, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. You guys are all set. Thanks for coming back and doing that extra work.
Thank you.
Now, back to item three on our agenda. Felipe Goncalves, or Goncalves, as the applicant and Premier Commercial Properties LLC as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to change the use of a site from a pharmacy to a church. The parcel's located at 420 Daniel Wester Highway in the C2 Commercial Town Center Overlay, elderly housing and Aqua Conservation Districts, Tax Map 5D4 Lot 31, Case Planning Board 2025-9. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant on this one?
Just summarizing that the applicant's looking for a waiver of full site plan review to convert the former Rite Aid property into a church. Staff is recommending the board delay acceptance of the application just to allow the applicant time to provide some information necessary to the board to determine completeness. I know they're requesting a waiver of full site plan review, but there are a number of notes missing from the plan. There's also some traffic information that's missing that the board would need to declare completeness. So that's our recommendation, is just to delay acceptance and continue the hearing. But you can certainly let them make their presentation.
Okay. So, please introduce yourself and sign in, and then tell us about the proposal, and then we'll determine a course of action from there.
Chris Camboris, Premier Commercial Properties. I'm the property owner.
Felipe Goncalves, I'm the applicant.
Thank you. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Mr. Goncalves. Okay. I think that, I remember a month or two ago, hearing the conceptual design for your proposal. It was fascinating. I'm not sure everybody that is here tonight was here then, so give us an overview of what you've got going on and tell us about the plan.
Our project is looking to convert, we used to be the Rite Aid, into a church, to have the interior of that building fit out, do some signage on the outside, and not too much to the exterior of the building, other than just upkeep, you know, keeping up with the property, and some minor landscaping, just to keep up with it. And last time we were here, on our conceptual meeting, we came up with a couple of things that we wanted to address, which one was the parking over there, and when we get to the busier days, so we made an arrangement to have 10 extra parking spaces off-site, so that on a, on a busier day, you know, like we talked about last time we were here, you know, on the Black Friday of church, which would, you know, would be Easter, the busiest day of the year, we'd have those extra spaces where all of our volunteers can park their cars over there, and we'd be able to, you know, have a full parking lot available to be able to receive everybody who comes in and their families. So, yeah, that's pretty much the idea. It's to keep everything as is as much as possible, and just to do all of the work interior and have that change of use done for the place.
Okay. So when the, the 10 extra spaces from the, it says the plaza next door, is that the DW Diner folks?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that where they're coming from? Is there a document or something that memorializes that agreement?
Yes.
There's a lease agreement in there.
Oh, that's what that's lease agreements for. I saw it, stand over it and see. And with that 10, that gives you 123?
Yep.
Spaces? I don't recall whether we had a way of calculating the necessary number of seats or spaces or parking spaces. Robert, does 123 need a formula that we have, or is it just completely up to the board to figure this out?
This is a formula that we don't have the answer to. The site plan regs require one parking space per three seats or per six linear feet of bench space, and we don't know what they've got for the inside of the church yet, so we'd need that information from them.
Okay. So is that one of the things that we want to gain more information about before we accept the application?
Yep.
Is that, okay.
I, I have the number we're going for on the, on the plan.
I think I saw it, yeah.
On a, I have an interior, we already have somewhat of an interior design done for the place.
Okay.
And we're looking to go for 320 seats to get that buffer, and also have space for a nice-sized altar and a media room like you guys have here, so, and also to be under that number, so we can get, you know, maximum use of the building. And, and what we're counting on is 320 maximum in the building, so that would, you know, would include our kids' room and, and all the other, you know, cafe areas as well that where we would accommodate people.
And then that three-to-one ratio, that 123 spaces would certainly cover you?
Yeah. 123 times three would be 369.
Okay.
So we would be about, you know, 40 or so.
So, looks like just a little bit more supporting information for the town, but yes, it seems manageable.
Question for the town, is, do you have that plan that ties into those numbers? From what, from what I heard, is that if you don't have enough information, is there something that we can provide now?
It's, it's the site plan that's missing all the information on it. The plan is just a drawing with no notes of any kind. So, we, in the memo, put a whole list of notes that need to be added to that plan.
To the site plan?
Yep.
And you didn't?
No.
So that's basically, it's maybe several of these comments, but number eight has A through K items, and some of these might be interesting to the board's decision-making as well with traffic analyses and...
Yeah, if I could clarify, item K in the 8K, the traffic analysis is the most important for the decision of completeness, because the board typically has not thrown that in with a waiver of full site plan. They at least want the minor analysis to justify the traffic's not being impacted.
Understood. Board members, let me open up the floor. If you have any discussions with the applicant about the proposal or questions, anything?
Just a couple of minor questions. The property that's shown as Basco, uh, Baskowski, that's the auto repair place. It's right adjacent to you.
Yeah, it looks like it is.
And it just doesn't have, I just wanted to identify it with something I identified with. And the other one, I guess, which is Lot 5, Lot 50-4-5, that's, that's the gasoline station, I think. But, did I miss something?
That one is 5D4 Lot 5 is the gas station, at least according to the satellite photo.
Oh, okay. I didn't try and get it from there.
On your plan, the one that you provided to us, on the lot next door to the north, 5D4 Lot 4, it's transverse with a sewer easement that seems to end right at your property and connect from the gas station property. Is there, does that sewer easement continue over your property? Is that sewer line serving your building, or what is that situation with that sewer easement?
I'm not aware of it offhand, but I, my understanding, it does not serve anything to the building. It just crosses over.
Okay, but does cross over your parcel?
Honestly, I have never paid attention to it, so I can't say definitively.
I hadn't either, and it really, since you're not doing any site changes, it's not necessarily a decision-making concern, but it looks like it would follow right along that edge of your building and go somewhere, and the little piece of sewer easement that's shown here wouldn't make sense to be all that there is of it, because it's got, got to go somewhere. And I don't, I don't know where. It's interesting, though. Anyone else have comments or questions or things? Thank you for putting the snow storage area on the site. I think that certainly helps to understand it. And I think the number of parking spaces, once we understand the last little details that the department needs to do their math, certainly will seem, seems to me like it'll be enough, and I hope that you are packed to the brim and every day that you have services and are using them.
Question is, the, the parking that's shown on, on the plan you provided, that's already in place out there?
Yes.
That's unchanged from, yeah.
The two handicap spaces that are on the south face of the building are a couple of spaces over from being the closest ones to the door. Is there a reason why the handicap spaces aren't the closest ones to the door?
I believe, if I remember correctly 100%, now, there's a little, it's just access to that sidewalk that goes right next to the building, that concrete walk, so it's a little ramp that goes over that way.
Is it for a curb?
A curb, yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking for the word. I'm sorry.
Oh, is that the place where the, there's a ramp at this, at the sidewalk? Okay, then that would make the most sense to put it there. A strange place to put that, but I guess it is what it is. Other discussion by board members? I know that you're probably desirous of having us make a decision here tonight, but the staff's recommendation is that there's more information that they want to see and that they think we will want to see. And other than following the staff's recommendation, I don't know how to, how else to attack that. I sort of caught your hint that you'd love to be able to answer those questions today if you could. I don't, Robert, are all of these things kind of the level of the parking analysis, or are there some things that we could do as conditions of approval? I mean, I guess...
Yeah, most of the notes can probably be done as conditions of approval, but it's really up to the board as to whether they feel they, they need the traffic analysis or not.
So, laying that out, the applicant would certainly like us to make, give them a conditional approval tonight. In order to do that, we'd have to have a comfort level that this traffic, this minor traffic analysis, when it comes in, could be satisfied by the staff or as some condition of approval, and if you're not comfortable with that, then we should schedule it for another day and have that information put in front of us.
Can I jump in with one comment?
Of course.
In terms of just the traffic, the, from my understanding, and please confirm, that their services are at night during the week, and then Sundays are the bigger days and so on, just like most churches and so on. So, for me, when it comes to traffic, it is a signaled property. There is a signal there for safety and so on. And then the busier days are Sundays, which are just, a lot of other businesses are closed in the area, and, and at nighttime, where again, a lot of businesses are closed, so, so just to keep that in mind.
So you guys understand our activities are, mid-weeks are 7:30 PM. That's when it starts. Volunteers start showing up at about 6:30, so an hour before, just to kind of get the place opened up, everything ready. Sundays are 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM on Sundays. So, the traffic concern was for the 10:00 AM service because of the diner, so we figured that arrangement to have that. And like he mentioned, it's a signaled intersection over there, so with, you know, most of the business on, on that road, probably other than restaurants being closed on Sundays, I, I think should be okay.
Board members, what do you think? So, my, my general observations, when you've got 113 spaces on the site already, somebody planned for there to be 113 cars coming in at the same time. Now, the church will certainly gather and let out all at once, where a pharmacy used to probably have people coming and going at all, at all times, but the site was designed to have 113 cars on it at once and to have them come and go. With that, I'd probably be relatively comfortable with the...
I have no problem with leaving the, the final decision on the traffic to, to staff.
And does anyone else have comments or concerns about that? Robert, what do you think about that? Are we putting you guys in an okay place?
We would, we deferred to the board because we've never seen you guys be okay with not doing a traffic. So that's kind of the thing.
It's the first time for everything.
Yeah, if you are this time, then that's fine. You can, you can make a statement that you can, that the applicant does not need to provide a traffic study or any traffic letter or memo, and we can strike that condition from the conditions of approval.
I was thinking, instead of just striking it, have them submit the information, but to the staff for your review and acceptance.
Yes, I would like them to review it.
Right.
If we, we waiver it or pass it on to them, but I still want it done.
That was, that was my intent.
That's what I was thinking, too. Is that okay, Robert, if we do that? I think that'll put you guys in a better place, because all the rest of these things are just additions to put on the plan, and it's just compliance to go down the list and check.
And as also part of our services, we have a cafe. It's very popular that people will stay after service and they won't all leave at once. So, you know, volunteers also always stay after to prepare for the 6 o'clock service. So, traffic flowing out from the 10:00 AM service, it's slower than just having everybody out at once, shut the building down, and everybody go. So, you, you know, it, it's slower than having like 50 cars at once or 60 cars at once. Because people will come, they'll stop by the bookstore, they'll want to have a, a chat with some of the pastors at the church. And then at that time, people start trickling out and going, and, you know, a group goes out to lunch here, and a group goes out to lunch there. It almost, almost always happens that way. There's always that group that's no enemy of closing the building down, and they want to stay along. So, um, yeah, as far as the site conditions there, i- it's honestly a perfect site as is, and, you know, our view, obviously, we're the applicants, but, um.
I, I tend to agree. I think it, you know, when you guys are finished with your services, it might take a light cycle or two to get the cars off the traffic, but as far as impact on DW highway, it's only going to let however many cars can go through in a green cycle. And then you wait till the next green cycle. So I, I have a comfort level with that. Um, and so, Robert, if we did want to proceed, we've got to accept the application as complete and subject to the conditions in the memo.
Uh, yeah, accept it as complete and grant the full wa- the waiver of full site plan review.
Okay. Uh, then, board members, our first question is whether we find the application to be complete.
I shall move.
Is there a second?
I'll s- excuse me, I'll second.
Count Karen. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to find the application complete. And then, Robert, do we need to reword anything in your conditions to reflect the discussion here tonight?
The minor traffic study.
It's on here already, and.
Yeah.
Please provide a minor traffic analysis as outlined in the section three one four C.
Yeah, so that wording should be good enough.
Okay. Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll open and close a public hearing. Um, and with that, if the board is comfortable taking final action, there's a recommendation.
It doesn't work anymore.
The recommendation is to continue. But the recommendation could be, or a motion could be to grant conditional final approval, subject to the conditions in the staff memo.
I will move to accept.
Should there be a granting of a waiver of full site plan review first?
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Colleen moves to grant a waiver of full site plan review.
I'll second.
And a motion, and second by Lynn, obviously, if there's any elements of site plan review that are retained in the notes and the, on the staff's memo, then those are not waived, but.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, seven zero zero on that. And then now final disposition of the application.
I will move to accept the.
Do, grant conditional final.
Grant, we've moved so many times. I'll move to grant conditional final approval.
Subject to the.
Subject to, where is it?
Conditions in the memo.
Oh, subject to the conditions in the memo on, uh, what is today, April first, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a second for that mo- motion?
I'll second.
Lynn seconds. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. I'm glad we're able to get those little link wrinkles taken care of, so you didn't have to come back and see us. Not that we don't like seeing you, but I'm sure you've got better things to do with your Tuesdays. Thank you all.
I look forward to it.
What's next on our agenda? Completeness waivers, planning and zoning administrators report, and discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anybody have any discussion items or z- at planning and zoning administrators report? I did see there was administrative approval in my packet. Did you guys get that?
I did not.
I don't know if that was intended to be there. That was, uh, attached A D U for Ten Lantern Lane. An administrative approval to grant that. Robert, is there anything else that I should mention about that, or is that?
I don't have that in mind either, so it may have been there.
I just got extra paper in mind.
You're the only one who died.
I guess I'm special. You're the only one that matters.
Special. Okay, so on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, that it looks like the department granted, uh, administrative approval for an attached auxiliary dwelling unit at Ten Lantern Lane, um, with some conditions. Any other questions or discussion with the staff or report from your staff, Robert? I know that you were having a little staff turnover. You got some candidates for some new people. How's that going?
Uh, that seems to be going well, so we hope to get an offer out in, in the next day or so and get it accepted, and we can move on and wish Colleen the best as she exits toward Bedford.
Look forward to having an announcement and obviously continue to wish Colleen all the best. I, I hope our paths always cross again and again, because she's a, she's a real good one. And then can say Andy is moving on from our board, so been great to spend Tuesday nights for, what, about a year now?
Something like that, yeah.
Not bad. I hope you didn't hate it that much.
No, it's been a good experience. I was always interested in the planning board, so I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to spend some time. Who knows, maybe in the near future, I'll be back.
Are you not running for the council, or is that?
I'm not running for reelection.
Okay. I hope that, uh, harbors good, uh, future for whatever that leads you, or whatever that choice was behind that choice.
Public service is complete for now.
All right. Mission accomplished, huh? All right, and that means that we get our new friend over here, Peter Albert. Uh, glad to have you and look forward to working with you and getting to know you a little bit better.
Happy to be here.
Excellent. Um, I don't know if they told you or not, but once in a while, we go out for a beer after, so.
Oh, my God. Nobody told me that, Andy.
Only once in a while. Um, okay. Uh, if there's no other discussion or, or, uh, action items, then we're up to our approval of our minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I have one more thing.
Oh, Nelson, what you got?
Yeah, uh, I brought it up earlier, and I, I'd like some kind of a better understanding of this agreement that was made between, uh, D, not D O T.
D E S.
D E S.
D E S, and, uh,
In St. Albans.
St. Albans.
So, Robert, once we have a copy of that, can you put that on an agenda for just a little workshop?
Yep.
And, um, once you've sort of seen what it is, if it's, um, steeped in legal jargon, maybe we'll have our town's legal counsel come and translate it to the English for us.
I'm sure it is.
That may be helpful to, to do that. What the area is. So the thing that I found online was only a couple of pages of text, and then it goes into pages and pages of street names and things that, it doesn't look like it's in a map. Back River Road from sixty-four to one fifty-seven, Bayberry Court from seven to ten, Camelot from one to hundred and twenty-one, Camp Road number thirty-six. It's just along pages and pages and pages. Oh, there was a map there. Maybe that's it.
We could probably get a map made from that information. It would make more sense to me to work off a map than off of.
Yes, absolutely. So, um, there are some maps in here. I was just kind of scanning through it, and, and then I, I've spent some time trying to absorb what all these colors are. It's like. Got a lot going on.
I mean, is there any chance we could get somebody from D E S. to come in and, and to clarify this for everybody here?
Perhaps so. Um, I don't know who at D E S. is responsible for this beast.
Or, or, maybe from our engineering firm, uh, from Fussin O'Neil.
Well, the folks that authored it, it'd be nice if they sent somebody to explain it to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, this one that I'm looking at was signed in twenty twenty-two, so this may not be the last word on these things, but, yeah. So, let's get a copy of it first and then see if it.
What makes sense.
What makes sense, and then, yeah, we can absolutely invite somebody from D E S. to come see us. They, they don't have to, even if we ask them, but, they probably would. Or maybe Nashville Regional Planning Commission knows something about it, since it's got a little bit of a regional impact.
It could be. It could, they could be ones, or, or Fussin O'Neil, for that matter.
Yep. Um, I love the idea of Fussin O'Neil, but I'm sure they want money for that. Since they work for a living. That's true, too. Okay. Uh, thank you for that reminder. We'll get that on a workshop. Let me, while I mention that idea of a workshop, we did also talk last time about, um, in a future meeting, having a workshop over a couple of our, uh, rules of procedure, bylaws, and that was an opportunity for us to think about whether there's anything else other than whatever the subject Robert had on his plan. Just to update any other rules or.
Master plan.
Regs.
Master plan, Bob.
That's a good point, too. Uh, what is our, uh, timeline, Robert, for the master plan and the funding available? And is that in the current year or next year, or what?
It's going to be starting in the next fiscal year. Uh, so we've got the money, I believe, regardless of whether the budget passes or not. So we're going to be starting it in the next fiscal year.
And that starts in?
In July.
July?
Yep. I'll be getting an R F P. out shortly.
Okay. Can, I think the last time the board had a look at the R F P. and kind of understood what it was we were proposing, can you circulate that to the board, and then we'll talk about it at our next meeting?
Of course.
If it's ready, if it's ready by the next meeting. And then we can be a part of that and see who our selections are. Okay. Anything else for people to discuss? All right, then approval of the minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I move to approve the minutes for March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second? Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Uh, no changes, no discussion, then all in favor, say aye. Oh, you have?
Aye, I'm, I was voting.
You're voting, okay.
He ordered them.
Sorry, you confused me. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
All abstained.
One abstention, six zero one, uh, or did you abstain too?
Yes.
Five zero two to approve the minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, then we're up to our adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
If you don't want these, give them to Robert. We'll reuse them.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know that.
You gotta put new stamps on them, though, right?
Yeah.
All right. Somebody make the motion to adjourn. Somebody second.
I seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.